No. Oh, yes. I did, I did.
Welcome. We will have a prayer by Councilman Carlos Graham followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious and eternal God, thank you for the precious gift of life. Please, Lord, refresh us. Teach us when to speak and when to listen, when to ponder and when to share. In moments of challenging decisions, focus our heart to the whispering of your wisdom. As we undertake ordinary and unnoticed tasks, gift us with simple joy. Bless our first responders. Bless our military men and women, both home and abroad. Bless our country, our state, and a special blessing on our city of Jefferson. In your darling son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order of the Tuesday, January 19, 2016 City Council Meeting. We're meeting on a Tuesday night in observance yesterday of the Martin Luther King holiday, so I hope everybody had a chance to observe Martin Luther King Day yesterday. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Branch.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hesse.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think Councilman Graham wanted to make a change.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Under miscellaneous items for number D, I'd like to recognize one of our retirees from the city of Jefferson.
Thank you. We will-
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Councilman Costalis.
Thank you. And we'll have a fairly brief agenda with the weather situation out there. I hope everybody is safe this evening, and I did bring my handy-dandy pink scraper if anybody needs help scraping their windshields tonight. Actually, I do want to take a moment, though, to thank Public Works because they do quite a bit of work out there to keep our roads safe for us, and public safety, police, and fire departments as well, and appreciate their work tonight. Item 4A is recognizing James Segman as outstanding city employee for January, so City Administrator Mr. Crowell will make our presentation this evening.
Thank you, and I will ask Mr. Segman to come on forward. He's here. And Mr. Segman works with the Transit Division, and I thought I would read a few of the items that were listed on his application recognition. So on December 2, 2015, Jeff Tran Handy Wheels driver Jane Segman went to pick up a longtime Handy Wheels client. Mr. Segman's client was not present at the designated Handy Wheels stop. Mr. Segman became a bit anxious as he waited for the client because it was unlike this client to be late. And Mr. Segman waited the standard five minutes for the client. Mr. Segman decided to knock on the client's door. Mr. Segman immediately discovered that the client was in need of medical attention, and Mr. Segman notified Jeff Tran Dispatch of the situation and requested Dispatch to get an ambulance, call for an ambulance. And Mr. Segman's quick thinking allowed the client to obtain the necessary medical attention. So that was a great opportunity to be able to step in and help that client, and I'm sure that that was very much appreciated there. An additional example of the extra effort offered by Mr. Segman includes the following: When Mr. Segman was taking his lunch break at McKay Park, he noticed a one-year-old toddler clad only in diapers walking around the lake at the park. After determining that the toddler was not being supervised, Mr. Segman took the initiative to find where the toddler lived, returning the toddler back to safety and to the toddler's appropriate guardian. Mr. Segman is also thorough and very responsive in helping Handy Wheels clients who ride the bus, and I understand that Chief Schrader also rides the bus. So we have-- and your wife is here. Want to have her stand? There she is, okay. We have a few gift certificates for you, and just thank you very much for your service and for all of that. And then there's a coin here for the mayor, and I know you wanted to come get a picture. You certainly can come up and do that, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you, and if your wife would like to get a picture here with the city seal in the background, you can do that again. Thank you. Congratulations. Really appreciate your service. Thank you, Mr. Segman, for your service, and wow, those stories are really amazing, and you've really made a difference and gone above and beyond what you're required to do, and appreciate the impact that you've made on our community for it.
I would just like to say that I'd like to accept this on behalf of my coworkers and fellow drivers because I feel like any of them in the same situation would have done the same thing.
Well, thank you.
Great job.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's wonderful. And item 4B is the USS Jefferson City submarine flag dedication. We were lucky enough to get some flags from the crew that flew over the USS Jefferson City and the USS Missouri. I'll make that presentation at the next council meeting so that we can take some photographs, but in the interest of time, I did want to mention that, and when we are finished with that, these flags will go on display in our case. But we're very honored to have those here, so at the next council meeting, I'll make a more thorough presentation, unless anyone is here from the submarine committee this evening. Okay. We'll do that for the next meeting, then? Okay. And then item C, the proclamation to welcome back the legislators, is also something that I will present more briefly. We did have a representative that was going to be here this evening from Senator Kehoe's office, but due to the weather, we thought it would be best maybe to make it more brief. But I did want to take a moment to, on behalf of the city of Jefferson, welcome back the Missouri State legislators and say how important it is to have them in our community. This is their home away from home, and we do appreciate having them here and the impact they have on our local community, and hope that they will enjoy some of the things we have to offer in our community. The proclamation mentions the Lincoln University basketball game. We hope they'll take in a game while they're here at Tour of the Prison Penitentiary and the Katy Trail Runge Center, Missouri River Bike Pedestrian Bridge, or one of our lovely greenways. So I will make sure that this gets presented to the legislators, and we welcome them back. Item 4D, at this time, I would ask Matt Marash to make a presentation. We have a retiree, Mr. David Irwin, who is a longtime retiree from the wastewater division. So if you'd like to come forward at this time?
Dave, if you want to come on up?
Thank you.
I'll use this microphone. I'll let Dave stand right there.
Sure. Come on up to the podium.
I just real quick, I'm going to say a couple of words about Dave.
Yes, thank you.
But I'll borrow something that I remember John Land, one of our previous mayors, used to do. He kind of gave a one-word description of people when they retired or something, and so a lot of hyphenated words came to mind, but I'll use open book. Dave's an open book, you know, which is good for somebody in my position to have, you know, kind of get the facts, and no matter good or bad, Dave, I could always depend on him to give me kind of the unvarnished truth so we could move forward on whatever it was that we were talking about. So I appreciate that. But Dave's been 35 and a half years of service here, and if I make sure I got my facts, he'll correct me if I'm not, but 17 years as plant manager, I believe, right? And besides plant, we all know what that is, that big thing across the river that we don't have to think about because we have guys like Dave to take care of it for us and his staff, but he also has 30, over 30 pump stations around town that they take care of over there. And then our Algoa Plant, as well as our pre-treatment program with industrial users, biosolids, disposing of them properly. You know, Dave's just been a really great employee for the city over the years, and I really appreciated him. He's was in, he was our manager when we rebuilt the plant in early 90s, I guess, correct? And went through the 93 flood. I mean, there's so many things, you know, this short description probably doesn't do it justice, but I'd also say, I'd say Dave is a good employee advocate for people that work for him. In his time, I guess we had one operator, licensed operator, at the city under his tenure. I think it's grown to 13 different various levels of operator license, so he made sure the employees knew it was a good idea to be trained, and he was supportive of that, and I appreciate that as well. So that's a sign of a good leader, and we appreciate that. And in his tenure, he's probably won more than this, but I jotted down a couple of awards he's won. In 2005, he was the Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator of the Year here in Missouri, and then 2007, he also received another award for outstanding performance for wastewater treatment plant operators. So great career here at the city, and I appreciate him and being recognized tonight.
Well, thank you, and congratulations-
Thank you, David.
-on your retirement, David. And I know they've already had a retirement reception for you, but I wanted to present to you here at the city council meeting. This is very important, and that's quite an impressive list of accomplishments that you've had here. Appreciate your service to the city, and have a note here for you as well. So congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, am I pleased to say something?
Yes.
Before Dave, you take your seat. My wife always remind me that standing beside every great man, there is a great woman. And so at this time, I would like to also recognize his wife, Julie, who just recently retired from the military. So I just want to, if she would stand and please be recognized. So thank you for your service as well. And I know David did bring his daughter and son-in-law and the grandkids, so if they would stand and be recognized as well. Okay. And thank you so very much for your years of service to the city of Jefferson. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So glad to have you all here tonight to celebrate this happy occasion. Thank you for your service. Item 5, public hearings. There are none. Item 6, appointments by the mayor. We do have a special appointment this evening. Appointment of our new finance director, the Director of Finance and Information Technology, Margie Mueller.
And Ms. Mueller is in the audience here.
I wanted to come to the podium, Margie, too.
Uh-oh. I didn't tell you about that part of it. Did I not mention the speech? I should have. I recommend the appointment of Margaret Mueller as Director of Finance and Information Technology. Ms. Mueller currently serves as a Chief Financial Officer and the Administrative Services Division Chief for the Missouri Department of Conservation. Ms. Mueller has extensive experience in management, including directing the financial management of a complex organization. Ms. Mueller currently works closely with an independent commission with the Missouri Department of Conservation, so she has experience working with policymaking boards. Ms. Mueller's prior experience also includes overseeing information technology operations. Ms. Mueller has a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration with an emphasis in accounting from Columbia College. Ms. Mueller is also a certified public accountant, and pending your appointment, Ms. Mueller's starting date will be March 1, and I recommend the appointment of Margaret Mueller as Director of Finance and Information Technology.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Welcome, Margie. We're very glad to have you here at the city and look forward to working with you and getting to know you and work with you. So welcome to the city of Jefferson. Very glad to have you on board.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Item 7, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. There are none this evening. Item 8, announcements by the mayor, council, and staff. I do have an announcement. There is going to be a retirement reception honoring Bill Lockwood from Parks and Recreation Friday, January 22, 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Parks Annex Building on, at 427 Monroe Street. Are there any other questions? I know there's a couple committee meetings coming up, I believe, finance. The reception is 10:00 a.m. to noon this Friday, the 22nd. Finance committee tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m., and the public works and planning for this Thursday has been canceled. Any further announcements from council? Item 9, Lincoln University student update. Due to the snow, Jonathan is not here this evening, and if there's anything else to report on behalf of Lincoln. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. So if anybody would like to come forward and speak about anything this evening that's currently on the agenda, you're welcome to come forward. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to item 11, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Okay. Would you like to speak this evening, sir, about any item that's on the agenda tonight?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the proposed dog ordinance.
Okay. You're welcome to come to the podium. And I believe you said you would like to speak about Bill 2015-98 pertaining to the outdoor animals ordinance, which is to be introduced this evening.
My name is Jim Nichols, and I live at 419 Oak Valley Court. And I was thinking on my way down here how people would view somebody that was, could possibly be against a dog ordinance, because we might think that anything we could do for our animals would be helpful. But I'm 71 years old, and I can't ever remember not having a dog. And I believe that I'm a qualified dog lover. We have three dachshunds right now, Sassafras, Buddy, Max. And a couple of things. And by the way, my wife feeds our dogs every meal, which is no end to the frustration for me because of how much she spends on them, but she does. But I think this regulation was probably born in a good heart. I think somebody saw a dog on a chain, out in the cold, and said, "We should do something about this." And I think sometimes a regulation can be, the effects of a regulation can be sought, but those effects are not actually successfully carried out. First thing I'd like to talk about specifically is that there's two kinds of people that I've noticed. There are people who love dogs, and there are people who don't. And what I specifically want to talk about tonight are the people who don't. The people that don't love dogs are not going to cut a hole in their front door for a dog door, especially not if that door costs $2,000 or $3,000. And what are they going to do about cutting a hole in the screen door as well as the front door, or the screen door and the back door? They're not going to do it. They're going to get rid of their dog because they didn't really love that animal. I think if this regulation is successfully passed, what you're going to see is a majority of the people who don't really care about their animals are going to stick them in a kennel all day when they go to work. And I'd like to maybe ask some of you what you, how you would feel if you were in a three-by-three cage, barely able to stand up, couldn't go to the bathroom, you can't, you're all alone, it may be ice cold in that garage, and a lot of people who are going to do that don't care. They just don't care. A lot of other people are going to put an animal out in a cold garage instead of out in the 25-degree weather, even if they have a fenced yard, and there might be antifreeze leaking in that garage. And I know a lot of you know about how deadly antifreeze is to animals. It's, and there again, I think you're talking about the people who really don't care about them. But I think some people that will put a dog in a kennel are in no hurry to get home at night. They're going to go out and eat and maybe have a few drinks, so that animal will be in that kennel 10 hours. And they may leave him in that kennel all night because they don't want to fool with him. And he's not going to get any exercise, he's not going to get any love from the people. I've seen it a lot. I also know a lot of people that if they've, if they've had a dog get out in their yard and Animal Control picked that animal up, it's, what, $30 or $40 to get it back? I don't know what it is. But they're not going to do it. Because I'm talking about the people that don't really care about animals. They're just going to leave it at the kennel, and, you know, if he's not adopted by someone who does care, he's going to get put down. Also, a lot of people, if a dog regulation begins affecting their freedom, they're going to put that dog or that puppy in the back of their car, and they're going to drive out on Shot Road or Bald Hill Road or somewhere, and they're going to dump that puppy out. Now, I am not so much anymore, but I have been a hunter a lot in my life. And I can tell you that puppies that get dumped out get eaten. They don't find a warm, safe home 100 or 200 yards away. So what I'm saying to all of you is there could be unintended consequences to this regulation.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
I just have one more thing to say. May I, or?
Sure, and I know you've hit the five minutes, but you're welcome to wrap that up.
I have, my, my house backs up on the Country Club Drive, right there at Oak Valley Drive, where you come down to the stop sign, and we have a possum that lives out in the, out in that bank that comes down in the creek, and we feed Ernie. And I can tell you that animals will survive this cold, they will survive this snow and winter, and they have been doing it for 20,000 years. And if we turn our dogs into something that can't even go outside, I think we're going to kill them.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For your comments, and we'll take that up shortly. Item 11, or anyone else here to speak this evening? Item 11, consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2015-96. Mrs. Powell?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri transferring land for right-of-way to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, Department of Transportation, MoDOT.
Mr. Crowell?
I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Lockwood's absence. This item will dedicate about, donate about 88 square feet of Washington Park property to the Missouri Department of Transportation for some ADA improvements.
Thank you. Any questions? Bill 2015-97?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the city code, Chapter 8, Section 8-3 and Section 8-5 by establishing requirements for the supervision of apprentices by dual-licensed individuals.
Mrs. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This amendment is recommended by the Plumbing and Electrical Boards. It amends sections in Chapter 8, which is the building code, to clarify supervision of apprentices working under the city's adopted electrical and plumbing codes. In addition, it removes the fees from this, from those sections in the electric and plumbing code to Appendix Y. The code specifies that the ratio for supervisory purposes for both plumbers and electricians is two to one. This code will amend the code to specify that the apprentices supervised may be in only one trade and per one, per, one per job site. The legal opinion that was drafted by the law department, the city's law department, is attached to this bill summary, and I'd recommend your reading of that for more information. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. 2015-98?
An ordinance amending the city code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, Chapter 5, Animals, Section 5-15 by further defining the minimum standards for the care of animals housed outside.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Captain Wildy's also here to answer questions if you need them answered. This was an issue that started out with a citizen concern, and they discussed it with the shelter, and then it went to the Shelter Advisor Group, and now it's come to you all for discussion. A couple of points to probably make is that the regulations regarding how an animal has to be kept inside or outside are actually not new. Now, that doesn't mean it's not worth something discussing, but these are already in force right now. The only thing really new is redefining or clarifying the structure that's necessary for outside, and then setting out the conditions whereby the animal control officer can take the animal into custody. So let me just clarify quickly. So currently, it's not acceptable to keep a dog outside unless it has essentially a house or access into the building, into your, into your house, or oversight of a person who's there, or for a short duration. So in other words, if you've got a dog door that is compliant with the ordinance, you're fine. If you've got a doggie door that goes into your house, you're fine. If you've got a, somebody at the house to let the dog in, if it gets too bad, you're fine. Or if you've got some, if you're only going to be gone for a duration of an hour or less, then you're fine. So in all those conditions, it's okay to have the dog outside. So really, what this ends up being is if there's a dog, it would affect an animal or a dog that's outside with, with no house and no ability to get inside and no one to let them inside, at least for more than an hour a day. And those things, again, are in the code now, however, again, still worthy of discussion. The original intent, I think, on that part of it was just to define the structure a little bit better, to make sure that this, the, so, and when I say structure, I mean the doghouse, that the doghouse is suitable for the breed, age, condition, size of the dog, and enclosed and protects the animal from weather, wind, rain, et cetera. And so there was some work on that. And then the other part of it is, we currently, right now, if Animal Control does see a dog in life, in a life-threatening situation, they might go get it, and it's problematic probably because we don't have a specific provision in the code, and I think that was the, the purpose of Section H there, is to give specific authority for an animal, control officer, to go help an animal who's, who's in a life-threatening situation. And then we try to define that a little bit about when that is. And so, and Captain Wildy mentioned this just before this meeting, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the hotter than 90 degrees or cooler than 30 degrees was kind of a vet comment about, kind of when you're in the zone where you need to be concerned. So what this essentially says is, hey, if it's in one of those zones that we don't, that we need to be concerned about, and there's no weather, and they're not compliant with the rest of the code, which is the doghouse or whatnot, then an animal control officer could go seize the animal for the safety of the animal. But again, then there are some other conditions, so, you know, tornadoes, floods, thunderstorms, et cetera, also allow that. And I know the council, you've all gotten some comments from folks, and Councilman Mahalovich has been massaging this and trying to work it to make it a better ordinance, and he's got some things, and I know he's searching that for additional comments from council and public as well. So with that, maybe turn it over to you for any questions you've got, for either myself or Captain Wildy.
Thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
Yeah, thank you. I think another one of the important caveats that maybe we're missing as well, as it's written into this language, is that- Yeah, thank you. I think another one of the important caveats that maybe we're missing as well, as it's written into this language, is that it would mandate that as opposed to us just going out and immediately seizing an animal, that we would work with the owner first to educate them. Our overarching goal is to promote responsible pet ownership. It's not to come take your animal from you. Our, our mandate via this revision would be that we would work with the owner to ensure adequate shelters available, and if not, to educate them to make sure that it is. And at that point, only would there be a gross refusal on behalf of the animal owner or absence of the owner would we immediately impound that animal. For example, severe weather, tornado, as you mentioned, severe thunderstorm warning, if we see that an animal is in danger and there's an absence of the owner, we would take that into our custody and to ensure its safety. Just want to make sure that we assure people we're, we're in the business to promote responsible pet ownership and work with pet owners to just make sure that their animals are safe.
Thank you very much, Captain Wildy. Any other questions from council? Councilman Mihalovich?
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of comments going around about this 90 degrees, 30 degrees, and then the, also the, the thought that you're sporting animals have to be inside. Somehow that was misread or misquoted, but no animal has to be inside. They can stay out 24/7, 365 days a year, as long as there's adequate shelter. That's the main deal. And they need to have adequate shelter in case of those conditions that are life-threatening, such as there's a tornado coming and something, you just can't have a dog in the middle of nothing without a shelter to go to. So, so only, this only kicks in. It only gives our Animal Control Officer the right to impound a dog upon none of the above conditions being met. So if, if a dog has adequate shelter, based on the definition here and all those other conditions defined by the legal department, then the dog is, is fine. I, I don't think this is a threat to sporting animals, I don't think it's a threat to those dogs that thrive outside, and I, I don't think this is a, this is a concern for those that, that want to see our Animal Control Officers have too much power, because I think Captain Wildy made a good point that it's, that the, the whole idea is to educate the, the owner, to inform them and give them time to correct the problem, and then, and then they would, then they could impound it if necessary. But today, if our officers see that animal in a life-threatening condition, they really don't have any authority to go do anything about it. This gives them that authority. Now, I think there's plenty of room for improvement in some of the, the people that I have heard, as soon as I explain to them that this doesn't cover that, or it doesn't cover this, then they're, they're generally fine with it. And I've got several people that called me that want us to support this and pass it. However, I'm not going to fast-track this unless you all are comfortable in taking a vote, so I intend to, to offer up suggestions in the form of how we might improve this based on what I've heard, and then I'd like your all comments, and then be sure to get back with the people that are talking to you about this so that we can perfect this and maybe have it on for the next agenda. And if it's at that point and you feel comfortable with it, we'll vote then. If not, I'll put it on the informal.
Thank you. Councilman Scrivener.
Yes, I've had phone calls from people both who support it and people who are concerned by it. And I guess one of the things that myself personally, that I, that I wanted to try to understand is, I realize there was an individual that, that brought this forward, but are there any documented instances of where, where there were situations that occurred that this ordinance is going to change that situation?
I did take a look at our statistics from last year, and we covered around 189 what we would call check well-being calls for animals. Broke that down by month, and you can see a spike on check well-being calls over the winter months, but there's an even greater spike during the summer months during heat. Those calls tend to go down in the spring and during, during nice weather. As a result of that, there were eight animal neglect and cruelty calls generated as we go out and check well-being, so I would say, based upon last year's statistics, we looked at eight of these situations in the city.
So about 4% or less?
Roughly.
Is, is there a, how, how would the enforcement change? In, in those eight instances, for instance, what, what, in your opinion, how would this ordinance have changed that situation?
In my opinion, the enforcement for those eight instances would not change, because when we got there, it was an obvious neglect or cruelty type event. I think some of the language written into this allow us, allows us more discretion to look at that circumstance based upon the breed of dog, the age of the dog, the condition of the dog. I mean, that's one of the biggest issues I've heard, is that what about my sporting dog? What about my black lab that loves it outside? And right now, it's, we use that discretion, but it's not formally, formally recognized by the ordinance. I think that allows us more discretion formally when we go out to see that this dog is, it's a Siberian Husky and it's cold outside, that dog is happy and it's content. It allows us a little more leeway to, to make those investigations.
Okay, so in the, in the instance where the dog is content, even though someone might have called with a concern, that, again, that outcome doesn't change because you wouldn't have done anything before and you won't do anything now. What if it's a Chihuahua?
That's where the, the training of the Animal Control Officers come in, and it also has to do with the condition and the age of the dog. So it may very well be a Siberian Husky, but it may be an old Husky that isn't doing so well. All of those factors are going to be taken into consideration as to the health and well-being of that animal.
I, I think in every case where I've had someone express a concern about this ordinance, they've started out by telling me that, as Mr. Nichols did, that, that they're dog lovers, but they're concerned about overreach and expansion of government, you know? And, and I guess I, I kind of am of the same opinion. I, you know, Sunday I was coming home from, Sunday morning, it was about 7 degrees outside, and I drove past a field there at the end of Boonville Road, and there were three horses standing out in the field. They all had snow blankets on, and of course, there was a barn and a, and an open shed. They could have been in the barn, they could have been in the shed, but they all three were standing there. In fact, they were asleep, they weren't even grazing. And so I, I guess it's, sometimes I think we just, we just look for, for things to worry about. And I guess I'd be more worried about the Euro toddler that was out with the diaper on. What are we going to do about parents that, that are neglecting their kids? You know? I guess we need to worry about dogs being neglected too, but it's certainly not at the top of my list.
If I could, one, one thing of value this ordinance, I think, brings to it is that police use discretion all the time and, and code people use discretion and things like that, but really discretion is what gets you into trouble. You kind of like to have as bright a line of rules as you can, and so one value that this does bring is that tells the Animal Control Officers, okay, if it's more than 90 and it's less than 30, and they don't comply with these regulations, then you can take the dog. So it takes a little bit of the guesswork out of it. It really, it somewhat narrows it down, because really what it's saying is if it's less than 90 and over 30, you can't take the dog. All you can do is issue a summons. So I mean, you were just saying, I'm not arguing one way or the other, just there is value in a little bit of bright line that it can bring.
I had an individual call me, and, and again, I, you've already addressed this, so I don't know that I even need to say it, but I'm going to. Gave the example of, I guess, apparently, they, they have some sort of a, of a dog that's very long-haired. A Husky comes to mind, but I don't think it was a Husky. But anyway, during the day, they put the dog out on their deck. And his concern was that, he goes to work in the morning and during the day, the, the temperature changes, and now, when he was perfectly, you know, content weather-wise and certainly within the law, now during the course of the day, the weather changes. Or the thunderstorm you're talking about, I can't imagine Animal Control Officers out when there's a tornado forecast, out driving the streets looking for dogs that are in peril or even in a thunderstorm. But it, it just, it just seems, like I said, maybe a little overreach.
Any further questions? I wanted to mention, Councilman Mihalovich, you worked hard on, on some revisions to this ordinance. Will those be available on, on the city's website so that the public can also review the differences?
I'm going to ask for some fellow councilmen to provide any comments they want, and then I'll, then I'll send them out, yes.
Great, so that way people can know to, to check back for revisions.
Yeah.
Because some of the revisions the public may have, you might have included in your revisions there, too.
Yeah, and, and I think Councilman Scrivener brings up a point of, that I think a miss, there's a lot of misunderstandings about this. It wouldn't matter, if your animal's not safe in shelter, basically, it doesn't matter what the conditions are.
That's right.
So, so we need to, and, and, and council has drafted a little more clear, clarity to that issue with regard to when this goes into effect. If you have adequate shelter and you meet those things, there's no problem about what the temperature is, really, or the weather conditions. However, if they're not secured and they're not cared for, and you have these life-threatening conditions, that's, that's when we, we look at impounding your, your, your animal, but only after education takes place.
Thank you. Also, Captain Wildy, and I wanted to also thank the veterinarians who worked on this ordinance along with the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, because they have the professional background as well to, to draft that, so thank you to all involved. Item 13, Bills Pending, 2015-93. Mr., or I'm sorry, Mrs. Powell first.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a road relinquishment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the relinquishment of portion of Jefferson Street to the city.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. And as a result of our project at Stadium in Jefferson, Highway 54 exit ramp, we noticed some of the right-of-way irregularities in the area, and some of them we were maintaining but didn't have official capacity to do so. Others were rebuilding and would like to take over, so this kind of clears up for everyone where our right-of-way limits are, and they'll basically be from the off-ramp of Highway 54 onto Jefferson Street, back to the bridge north of the intersection as city right-of-way. And there's a diagram in your packet if you'd like to see that in detail, but that way it clears up the right-of-way for us and allows us to proceed with our project.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, please. Branch.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mihalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2015-94.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing easement rights over a portion of a former alley located between lots seven and eight of the East Elm addition, having been vacated by ordinance 14-559.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. So clerk indicated this is a vacation of easements, easement rights over a formerly vacated alley. There's a church located there, and they're wanting to remodel and expand a little bit, so that necessitated this additional vacation. We've checked with utilities, and nobody's utilizing that alley presently.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mihalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2015-95.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the westbound Highway 54, Missouri River Bridge Project, project number JP52189.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is another agreement with MoDOT. This will be for their Highway 54 bridge repainting over the Missouri River. Basically, what these agreements do is kind of notifies us of the project, first of all, and then secondly, allows them to work with the staff to erect signage, close different exit ramps onto city streets or off-city streets, and to complete their project. The project probably will, looks like it's getting going to get started in the April timeframe, as we previously had discussed. However, they have, they have a contractor, a specialty contractor in this case, and I know there was some discussion about closing considerable amount of traffic in this, this first phase. Well, the contractor's proposing basically a flip-flop to that schedule, so the first phase will really just close the, the exit ramp from, you know, MFA area and the soccer fields onto Highway 54 and take one lane out for some, erecting some scaffolding this summer. So that's kind of what they're looking at. Of course, there'll be many, many public service announcements from MoDOT about this as the project proceeds. It is over a year project as it stands today, so you have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mihalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, Nothing on the Informal, No Resolutions. Item 16, Presentations from the Gallery on Other Topics. Is anyone here to speak about any other items for three minutes? Seeing none. Item 17, Council and Staff Discussion. Any council discussion this evening? Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, to recognize our, all of our city employees, and I think it's important that we, that we do this because, and we just had two very good examples. One of our employees retiring, the other, other one receiving a commendation for their, for their work and concern. And I don't think we recognize our city employees like we should enough, and so I want our city, all of our city employees to know how much they're valued here and how much important their jobs are. Tonight, public works will be hard at Workforce yet once again, and so, you know, I just want to take some time out to, to reflect and really thank our city employees for the job, for the job that they do to keep our city going. So thank you very much to our city employees.
Thank you, Councilman Henry. Any other discussion this evening? Any new business, unfinished business? Councilman Costalis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kroll, this is for you. Have a question. When we wrapped up the budget in late September, one of the things we passed on was, and we promised the employees, was a wage and classification study. What's the status of that? We got any bids in yet or anything?
The RFP is being drafted now, so that hasn't, so no, we don't have any bids in because we haven't sent that out yet. So we're drafting the RFP now, and it'll go to the staff committee, and they'll have the opportunity to provide some input on that. Then we'll go out and request the proposals and go through the process. As I said in the memo that I sent to you at budget time, I anticipate having that information available for our next budget discussions.
That's my concern, is they have it there so they can, so that when it gets to us, all those are in there.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? All right, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and everybody, please, go home safely this evening with the snow and road conditions. Thank you.